Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing before the Joint Plan Commission and Town Board at the Town Hall on Thursday, March 12th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Consider the following matter: Public Hearing Number One, Text and Zoning Code Changes. The petitioner is Tom Kelnick. Property Address: West 234, South 3555 Les Paul Parkway. Matter Subsection 13-2-10 Sub-B Entitled Offsets (13-2-10 B-4). Subsection 13-2-10-D Entitled Accessory Building Size/Location. Subsection 13-2-9 Sub-12 Entitled In-Law Unit. Subsection 13-2-24 B Entitled Limited Jurisdiction. And Subsection 13-3-3 Entitled Conservancy District. As just a note, Mr. Kelnick, as a courtesy to the Town, acted as a petitioner on all of the changes presented here tonight in order to save the Town a little bit of money on advertising and so that we would have one public hearing instead of four. We will be following our procedure at public hearings tonight, Section 2-3-14. The following procedures shall be used at public hearings conducted by the Town Board: A) The Chairperson will read the notice of hearing. B) The Chairperson shall then call on those persons who wish to speak for the proposition. Each person wishing to speak for the proposition shall give his or her name and address. Each person speaking on behalf of the proposition shall be limited to a reasonable time as set by the Board. E) The Chairperson shall then call on those who wish to oppose the proposition. E) Each person wishing to speak in opposition to the proposition shall give his or her name and address and shall also be limited. Any person wishing to speak -- excuse me -- speak in rebuttal to any statements made, may with the permission of the Chairperson do so, provided, however, such rebuttal statements shall be limited to three minutes by any one individual. And when the Chairperson, in his discretion, is satisfied that the proposition has been heard, he or she shall announce that the fact of the hearing is concluded. Does the Board choose to invoke a time period?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to limit the time period for comments for two to three minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we'll open it up to public comments for anybody wishing to speak in favor of any of the propositions.
Angie Van Sox, South 51, West 25375, Glendale Road, Town of Waukesha. We don't know what they are, so it's hard for any of us to know what it is exactly you're asking us to comment on. You have your public hearing notice up, but no packet related to it. I would imagine there have probably been revisions since those of us who maybe could find things in the Plan Commission section. But to have a public hearing where you haven't published it or you haven't posted it is highly unusual and certainly lends itself to people not wanting to share what it is exactly that you're doing here tonight.
And oddly enough, it is our law in the Town of Waukesha, so that we're going to conduct the meeting exactly as per our ordinance. So if we'd like to speak in favor of the opposition, please do so, and if not, please let somebody else.
Mr. Merrick, I think it's appropriate for you to share with us, have your planner or someone else determine what it is exactly that each of these items are doing. I mean, we're not engineers. Tell us what it is, since you haven't shown us the documents.
We are going to follow the procedure that is our ordinance. Thank you.
So you're going to hide what you're changing tonight?
We're not hiding anything.
Well, how can we act on it if you haven't shown it to us?
If you would like to speak in favor of the proposition as per our ordinance, please do so. If not, please find your seat.
Which one?
Any that you choose.
And how do we know what they do? Is that just your secret? This is not how things are done in the Town of Waukesha. This is how you, John Merrick, dictate in the Town of Waukesha. Thank you.
In your packets that you picked up with your agendas, the ordinance revisions are all in there attached.
Are these as current as you have them after attorney review? Are these the same that were in the Plan Commission packet?
They are the updated ones after attorney review.
Okay, so it is not what was on the website under the Plan Commission packet for those of us that looked around and could look like them?
Why don't we have the attorney review what the changes are?
Well, I think the attorney should review the entire request because nobody knows what they are.
That's what they'll do.
Thank you.
As was previously mentioned, and I don't know if you all need to do it or want the planner to do it, we both wrote it. You know, the first section is dealing with the general provisions and offsets. And this is just a technical -- there are two changes that are being made to the ordinance, more or less at the request of the county. We went up as background information, went up the county to get some information on ordinance revisions, on zoning codes, based on a new Supreme Court case dealing with shoreland. And while we were there discussing things with them, we briefed them on several potential changes. As you know, the county also has to approve these changes. So the number four, I'm sorry, Section 1, Subsection 4, dealing with offsets, is the regulation that was brought to the attention after the last Plan Commission meeting regarding filling and/or grading activities within the 30-foot offset area. So the law has remained exactly the same with one change, and again, I'm going to tell you that it was sort of at the suggestion of the county that this change be made. And that deals with -- the language comes right out of the county code. And it deals with roads. And that's all it deals with, is roads and driveways, and it's what the past practice of this town has been, according to the county, and it's what they practice is in the county. And the reason we have reason to believe that the county will approve this language is because we used their language. And I believe this section of it, and the planner, correct me wrong, is verbatim from the county code. We had to modify it slightly under the other section, which is replicated in another section, but I believe it's identical to the county.
Attorney Mason, you are correct, and I will let the Plan Commission and supervisors know that as of roughly 4:30 today, I talked to Jason Ruth, and he has approved the changes in front of you from his standpoint. It still needs to go through his departments, but he had two grammar changes that he would like to see made. But the revisions that you see before you, we had sat down with Jason and his staff who went over them. He has reviewed the final language that's in front of you, and he sees no reason why it wouldn't be approved by the county.
So again, it deals with maintenance, repair, replacement, reconstruction, or new construction of town, county, state streets, highways, and bridges, and normal driveway construction and related bridges that are necessary in order to provide us access to a property or a structure, including, we may have one word in there, "structure," I think. I don't remember if that was in the county, so I don't want to criticize that there may be one or two words changed that went over with Jason, because he said they're of issues that they had. And then it just basically says that the Army Corps of Engineers and the DNR have approved of the project, then it's exempt from -- no, those are exempt, subject to the Army Corps of Engineers and Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approving them as needed under their procedures. So it's a very limited exception, and it comes from the county zoning code. Okay? Now accessory buildings. The accessory buildings ordinance was written quite some time ago. And if you'll look, and it's a little hard to see on the gray, but if you'll look, there's bolded language. The bolded language is the new language. The other language, and I didn't bold one section, and that's my fault, because Jamie made a change, the planner made a change to it, and I didn't. When I got it back and told Kathy it looked fine, I didn't bold these changes. But in the structures ordinance, and again, I didn't write this, Jamie wrote it, so I'll let him talk about it more. But it's my understanding, in that section, the bolded is the change. Is that correct?
You are correct. And section, in the accessory building section, it's B, Review and Approval. We clarified as to when an accessory structure requires only review by Building Inspector Montoya, and when an accessory building requires review by myself, Plan Commission Board, and Building Inspector Montoya. So B1 basically says that if you're under 600 square feet, and you meet the offsets and you meet the height requirement, you just work with the building inspector, and he issues a building permit for it. If it's over 600 square feet, or if you're exceeding the maximum height requirements, that's when you have to come to me for planner appointment. And then it also goes through Town Plan Commission and Town Board. And through the approval process there, I issue a zoning permit, once they comply with all of the conditions of the approval, and then the building inspector issues the building permit. The one area of language that we added was a recertification. Martin wanted the ability that when he goes out and inspects foundations and footings for the approved building, that if he feels it's within three feet of a property line, so offset, or side yard or rear setback, he can require a recertification of that before the building goes up. And what we're hoping through that process is that it'll resolve some of the issues that we've had to deal with over the last year or two with accessory buildings being approved, but then we find out that when they're actually constructed and finished, they're not where they were supposed to be, and they're within the required setbacks of the zoning district. So those are the changes that we're recommending for the accessory building.
In Section Number Three, we've received requests over the years in numerous communities to revisit the in-law unit conditional use. The changes are, again, as highlighted, and I'll go through them, otherwise they all remain the same and still a conditional use. The two issues that have arisen for conditional uses are what is the maximum size that can be allowed? Currently, it's a black-letter rule, you cannot exceed 800 square feet without a variance, which is difficult to get. And we've re-received what many commissioners, maybe not yours, because you haven't faced it, but other boards have faced, the question of whether they think there are certain circumstances where 800 square feet is still is too small in this day and age. Okay? And we'll get to that in Section Three, but I wanted to point out, because it's in C, when we read Three, it also previously read, I'm sorry, C, in Section Three, but C, previously read, and I'm going to read what I'm looking for, "There shall be an additional garage stall and one outside surface and parking stall for the unit." Experience has shown us that if somebody already has a six-car garage, just because they're building an in-law unit, we don't really think they need another stall. Okay? And so what you see in front of you is what the county has. There shall be an additional parking space for the in-law unit. There shall be no more than one in-law unit per single-family lot. It comes right out of the counties. When we were faced, when we read C and we saw, we have a, you're going to be seeing a situation possibly where they already have a very large garage, it's going to make it look silly to add another, you know, garage space. And so you can, as part of the conditional use, if you feel additional garage space is needed, you can require it. It could be a reasonable condition. But as your original code was written, we're asking you to consider whether or not the language the county uses as shown in 12C is appropriate versus your language. Policy decision, your staff's recommending it. Then E was changed, okay, let me explain E. Currently, E reads, "The Town Plan Commission shall determine if it's appropriate to have an interior door between the two living units." That presupposes that the two living units are contiguous in some shape, manner, they have a shared wall. How can you have a question of whether it needs to be a door between the two unless they are? We've been receiving a series of requests for in-law units where they're on the other side of the garage, they're on the back of the garage, and at the county level, the county has said they don't feel that there needs to be a reason for them to be contiguous if you don't feel. The goal is to make it look like a single-family unit, and the goal is to make sure it's only always used by an in-law unit and not a separate rental unit, right? And you accomplish that by the CU conditional use process, and you look at it. So we're asking you to consider that the Town Plan Commission is to determine if it's appropriate to have an interior between the living units if the units are contiguous, but it's not required that the living units be contiguous, because the original language could arguably be ambiguous, and we're trying to clear it up. That's all we're doing. It's not a major policy change. In the Town of Vernon, they were asked the same question by the county, they're under county zoning, and the Town of Vernon Plan Commission said, "We don't see a need to be contiguous." People were turning an exercise room that was off of the garage and into the in-law unit, and Plan Commission there didn't see it necessary. If you have one in the basement, we've always struggled, is that a shared wall, or do you have to have doors at the top and the bottom of the stairs? And so you're all shaking your head, so I think you understand what the issue is, and we're just cleaning up the ambiguity. If you say they have to be contiguous and they have to have a shared wall, we'll tighten up the old language for you. Now Section Four is the latter half of the in-law unit. We struggled with, by right, making the in-law units 800, 1,200 square feet. There were some on the staff who thought we shouldn't make it a black-letter rule that everybody can build a 1,200 square feet unit, we should write it as a special exception. So in B1 is the only thing new in Section Four, 13-2-24B, limited jurisdiction. In all districts where an in-law unit uses are allowed, the Board of Appeals, made by special exception, increase the otherwise applicable maximum living area limitation up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet. So if you'll read all the other ones, we wrote it exactly the same way. I noticed now there's a comma missing, I, well, I guess it's okay, because it's where the in-law units are allowed. But this was a request. We have a property owner who wants to build more than 800 square feet, they want a mechanism to come in and ask without going through a variance and having to prove a hardship. Would be near impossible to prove a hardship for 12, you know, larger than 800. But if you think it's reasonable to go up to 1,200 in certain instances, this would be the amendment that you would need. And in Section Five, that's the only change to that section. In Section Five, I think this is the one that is not highlighted, and I apologize, the changes, if you want to note them, is permitted uses, A, there was just permitted uses, there was not a 1A there, okay? And the other change then, so all the rest of that remains the same, other than that And then 1B is new, and it should look familiar, because it's a paraphrasing of what I told you was in Section One. You can compare Section One, Number Four, the highlighted language, to the language in 1B. It's for the same purposes. It had to be in two places, because it's the offsets was the language that was discussed last month, and then Conservancy District. And this is actually, one reason it's being put there is because, Jamie, again, correct me wrong, this is where it's in a county. In county, it's in the Conservancy area, because county doesn't have an offset rule like we have. So we had to put it in two places, but if you look at the county code under Conservancy, I believe that's where we stole this.
In the, correct, within the Shoreland and Flood Plain Protection Ordinance. Correct.
Now, as I told you, it's worded slightly different, and this is about the only thing that changed from some of the drafts, is the 1A and the 1B, and also that if we switched the language around, and we thought it made more sense to put "from the Army Corps of Engineers and Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources" up above. So if somebody's reading the paragraph, and it says, "The following uses are permitted in this district provided the project has received all necess," are provided in this district, then that next language was down below, and Jamie suggested we move it up above, and we moved it up above. So if there is another draft still floating around, an earlier draft. But the changes, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, the changes from the first, for any draft that was submitted, that's been on file the entire time till now, are terminus.
That's true.
I mean, and we can, if anybody has another draft, and they want to know why theirs reads differently, and I tried to point that out. I originally didn't have 1A and 1B on there. Jamie changed it, made it all one. I said, "No, we can't do that. We need to make, if we're going to do something, we got to make a 1A and 1B." And then the last change was just to move that language, that phrase, "Provided the project has received unnecessary approval and permits from the Army Corps of Engineer and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources." Again, compare it to what you have in Four, on Page Two, and you're going to find out they're almost identical. It's just that phrase was moved up to the front. So those are the changes, Mr. Chairman, and so I can answer questions for the commissioners at this time if you like, or we can wait and hear the public comments and then answer questions later.
Well, does anybody have any questions for Attorney Mason?
I would simply prefer to wait until the public comment is over.
Fair enough. So we'll get back on track then. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of any of the proposals, please do so.
All right, unfortunately, Angie Van Sox, South 51, West 25375, Glendale Road. Again, we haven't had any time to review this, we haven't had any time to compare to what current zoning is. It's been represented that this is county-driven. I've also spoken to the county, that certainly wasn't my impression in speaking with them. And this comes on the heels of Mr. Merrick saying, "What can we do to get around this related to wetlands at the discussion on the 26th?"
Ma'am, I was very clear. We are going to have the folks that want to speak in favor of the proposal as our ordinance speaks, and then those that choose to speak in opposition can do so. If you would like to speak in favor of the proposals, please do so. If not, please find your seat.
How do you know if I'm for or against yet?
Because you're not talking about the proposals, you're talking about, are you for or against the proposals?
There's some I'm for, and there's some I'm against.
Speak to the ones you're for, please.
But I do have a right to speak. This is a public hearing.
You have the right to speak to the proposals, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Yeah, but proposal's not limited by what you tell me to talk about.
No, ma'am, it's our ordinance.
Why not order, Mr. Chairman?
It's our ordinance, ma'am, and if you choose to use your time bickering, go ahead and do so. But you are here to speak for the ordinance, that's what our ordinance says. Yes, Mr. Radke?
Let's not banter back and forth. If you're going to speak at the public hearing, then do so. Let's not play the games.
Hey, I've been interrupted, gentlemen, not the other way around. I mean, with all due respect, Mr. Merrick has interrupted me each and every time. He has yet to hear--
So let's start. You got three minutes to talk for it, you know what's going on. Let's not play the game.
I don't know what's going on, and thank you, Mr. Radke, for actually clarifying what the situation is. We have not had this information. A typical way of doing this in the Town of Waukesha is for this to come to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission discusses it, sends it further. So let me ask a question. You have said that Mr. Kelnick was kind enough to bring these five forward to save us money. Which are Mr. Kelnick's and which are the Town's?
They're all Mr. Kelnick's.
No, you said--
I said, "As a courtesy to the Town, Mr. Kelnick acted as a petitioner on all of the changes presented here tonight."
And so he's going to be paying all the fees related to all the work that's done on all five of these. Am I to understand that? Because that is what the ordinance says. I just want to clarify. I don't think you really want to say that, but unless Mr. Kelnick is planning on paying for everything, that'd be great. But I doubt that, given his previous request for have fees waived.
I'll pay it if you go sit down.
Yeah, Mr. Merrick, why don't you smile at your buddy? That's great. You haven't answered the question. Are these all Mr. Kelnick?
Mr. Chairman, that's the expiration of the minutes.
Your time's up, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in favor of any of the petitions? Seeing none, we can move on to those that would like to speak in opposition of any
Jenna Glade, South 31, West 26111, Sub-13. I have no idea if my remarks are going to be pertinent, since things have changed. I'm going kind of by what Mr. Kelnick's interviewed in the newspaper, because that's all I knew. I have nothing against progress. I have nothing against business. I have nothing against code or ordinance changes, as long as everyone involved remembers that these are the laws of the town, and were written to protect the town land and its citizens. And that's citizens with an S. I have nothing against important and impactful changes discussed and debated one at a time during public hearings. I have a problem with this attempt for the public to debate and discuss these five important changes to our laws in 30 minutes. I have nothing against, and I expect our lawyer to be consulted, about whether projects follow town laws. I do have problems with our town lawyer being asked to try and get around town laws. I have nothing against our Town Board standing behind and using our resources to protect every citizen of the town. However, I am against the Town Board changing the town laws to benefit any one of its citizens. I am against changing the laws which protect the wetland. These laws were passed to prevent the diminishing and the pollution of the wetlands. Our past lawmakers knew that to allow any contamination of our wetlands is an abomination against every member of the town, and will set a precedent for any other potential building in sensitive areas. We all know how precious our water has become. To do anything to endanger this water recharge area should not be allowed. Code and ordinance changes would be beneficial if they positively impacted all citizens and businesses, not just one.
Evening. Marla Nemeth, W252, S4485, Meadowview Drive, Waukesha. I object, this is the objection part, subsection 13-2-10-10B, entire law sets. And 13-2-10B for, we need the 30-foot offset for wetlands. I do not think you should change that. Thank you.
Cindy Panaman, West 229, South 354, Milky Way Road. I'm never speaking at any of these, and, but I am very concerned. I'm a big baseball fan, my kids all, all play baseball, all three of them. But mine is the Conservancy. I do not believe that we have the right to change the way it is set up now for one person. He can make his building smaller, or he can maybe move it, he's got enough land over there. Where, if you open the door for him to do this, you're opening the door to other people down the road. And like where my house sits, I overlook a lot of these free, open lands. I see the wild animals and everything. You start fooling around with this, where are the animals supposed to go? Where are kids, ours can't even go down and play in the fields anymore, or any of this. It's not right to be able to just switch it around for one person and then open the door for all the builders in the area, because I'm right on the line of the Town Waukesha and the City Waukesha. And my home is in the Town. And I definitely disagree with having this, he can make some revision on where that building's going. Because I do not trust that he is going to not be there, and he's, they're just going to do it. And I know for a fact that if you are fooling with the DNR and those lands, they're there, and you can't even touch a blade of their back grass. Why, why, how come we can change that? I think it should be left alone, and he can move his building, or make it a little smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify-- Can we just get your slip for the clerk?
Sandy Hahn, West 230, South 3827, Milky Way Road. I have any number of comments about the things happening here this evening. I think anyone who's been here at the last few meetings knows that these meetings are a result of an effort on the part of the attorney to find ways around the law, and I think pretty much we found that there wasn't a way around the law, so here we are, planning to change the law. There were just several things that, before I made comments during the Plan Commission and the Town Board meeting, that I wanted to talk about, about this. I'm just-- the way that he should do it, and the route that he should go, and then found out that that wasn't necessarily going to work. But I'm disturbed that we're going to take our town ordinance and then say, "Well, we're going to turn over authority to the Corps of Engineers," when they say it's okay. I mean, I printed out, and I just stopped printing, the debacle that the Army Corps of Engineers represents. I mean, there are complaints going back to Herbert Hoover, you know, quoted as saying, you know, "It's just absolutely horrible." So I just don't think that interjecting, I mean, we, as conservatives, we're always saying we don't want whatever the government is above us telling us what to do. And here we are now, going to make a rule that says, "Well, when the government above us says so, then it's going to be okay." I just don't understand why we don't keep the authority in our own hands. There are some other things I have about the language in that paragraph, but I'll hold off and talk about them later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Spacey Blank, West 229, South 3876, Milky Way Road. I'm opposed to the zoning change 13-2-10 for offsets. I don't think we should be changing the law for one business or one person. The ordinances and the laws are here for all of us, for the entire town. If they don't meet an individual's or a business's business or plan, they should adjust their way of doing business to conform with the laws that we currently have. We shouldn't adjust just for their specific need. I'm very concerned about the conservancy and the wetlands, as others have said. There's a reason why we have the offsets that we do. We need to consider the impact of changing those. If we change for this specific business and their request, that's going to have longstanding implications for forever. Once we build into those wetlands, obviously, we can't roll that back. So I implore you to really think about making these changes that you're considering, the impact that it will have for generations to come, really forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Marla Nemeth again. Sorry, I had forgotten a couple of things to ask you. Angie asked you a question before, earlier. Who's going to pay for all these zoning changes? Can you answer that question for me?
Her question was actually different. Who's paying for the fees?
Okay, well, who's paying for the fees?
Mr. Kelnick did pay a fee for the zoning change that he requested.
All of the changes?
For the one that he requested.
So we absorb the cost for the other ones?
There is zoning change-
As taxpayers?
There are zoning changes for the town.
Number two, we have election coming up in April. Let's change this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sorry, I had forgotten a couple of things to ask you. Angie asked you a question before, earlier. Who's going to pay for all these zoning changes? Can you answer that question for me?
Her question was actually different. Who's paying for the fees?
Okay, well, who's paying for the fees?
Mr. Kelnick did pay a fee for the zoning change that he requested.
All of the changes?
For the one that he requested.
So we absorb the cost for the other ones?
There is zoning change-
As taxpayers?
There are zoning changes for the town.
Number two, we have election coming up in April. Let's change this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Rudy Zylehoff. I live at West 229, South 3958, Milky Way Road. Been living there for close to 30 years now. I've been to quite a few of these meetings that Mr. Kelnick's been at. And I have a couple of questions. Maybe you can't answer them right now, but just think about them. What's in it for the town to let this building be built and have these zoning changes made? What's in it for the town? I don't see it. I see what's in it for Mr. Kelnick. He's running a business. He doesn't want to go to work every day, and he wants to run a business where he can make money doing this. That sounds great, doesn't it? But what's in it for the town? What's in it for the board? You know, when he was asking to have the baseball fields made, all I heard, speaker after speaker after speaker, "It's for the kids. It's for the kids. It's for the kids." The kids were here wearing their baseball uniforms. They're praying them in one right after another. It's for the kids. It's not for the kids. It's, he's running a business, and we're going to be changing the code so he can run a business and make them, and make money, and not have to go to work like everybody else every day. I just, I just don't understand why we would allow him to do that. Why would we make any changes for that? You know, this stuff about it's for the kids, you know, we agreed to let him build the baseball fields, and he made a lot of, a lot of promises, a lot of agreements. Then it's all of a sudden, "Let's go back and get the lights. Let's go back and get, you know, allow speakers. Let's go and see if we can do this and that. You know, let's, let's not do the parking lot." He made all these promises, and then when he didn't live up to his promises, he came back to get approval. When he didn't get an approval, he went to the top out of the city to try to get annexed. The city said, "We don't want to have anything to do with this." They kicked it right back to you guys. So where are we at now? He's going to make a lot of promises, do all kinds of things, and it's probably not going to happen. And I keep wondering, what's in it for the town? I see what's in it for him. I see what might be in it for some of you. I don't see what's in it for residents of the town. That's about all they have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Onto my three-minute deposition. What's in it for the town? That's a very good question. It'll probably come up that this is good for business. We need more business in the town of Waukesha. We're pro-business state now, right? Mr. Kelnick currently pays on his 37 acres $1,400 a year to the town. This group gave him a reduction in fees of over $5,000. We still have to make that up. This board did that. So what's in it for the town? The town is not getting anything out of this. It is costing the town money. It will continue to cost the town money while one person is benefiting. That is not what the zoning code is for. Mr. Macy has been very eloquent with the county. You know, we were smart enough, town boards years ago, to establish village powers. The town of Vernon that he talks about didn't. They are still trying to get out from under county zoning. We have our own zoning. It is because we can control our community. We are not the county. The county is interested in putting a bypass through wetlands. I don't think we would do that. We need to make decisions for ourselves and our own committee that benefit the community, all of the community. And I think the theme of one person being assisted here, especially after Mr. Merrick's comment last time, how do we get around this? This is how you get around the law. You rewrite the law for one person. It's wrong. You shouldn't support it. But I won't be surprised if you do, because that seems to be the pattern these days. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I add something?
Sure.
I thought of something that's in it for, or that could be, could be for a town resident. If you're a professional athlete, I read in the paper that professional athletes are going to go to this place and work out and take care of whatever ailments they had, and they had all these facilities, take care of all that kind of thing. But I don't think we have a lot of professional athletes living here. I don't think a lot of these kids that we've allowed the baseball field to be built for are really going to take advantage of this. I mean, who's really going to take advantage of this? Town residents? I don't think so. This is a business. It's somebody trying to start a business. I give them credit for trying to start this business. I don't want to go to work every day. But the thing is, this belongs in an industrial park. It doesn't belong in a town Waukesha, in that park-like setting. It belongs in an industrial park.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any rebuttals?
We need to clarify a couple of things for the record. First, the, sorry. We need to clarify a few things for the record. First, the changes that are being proposed and have been petitioned do not at all change the law as it relates to structures. The entire discussion that was brought up at the last meeting was the location of the structure, and whether it could be 10 feet away, and whether or not there could be grading, and we get the word lot fill, filling and/or grading activities within 30 feet set of the offset area. This proposed change, and apparently I didn't make it clear when I made my introductory comments, although I think a few people noticed it because they didn't mention it, does not change that law at all. Okay? The proposal, and we didn't want to interrupt anyone while they were speaking, the proposal that's going to be presented moved the building. Because your staff is not in here recommending that you change the law as it relates to structures. They moved the building to be in compliance with the law. I want to make that very clear for any of you who haven't picked up on that yet, but that's true, and you'll be able to make your comments later. But they moved the building. The law that's being proposed came up in the discussion, because we found out from the engineer that a number of people have built driveways in this town through the wetlands. And their driveways would theoretically be illegal. And so when all of you who said this is for, should be for all the people, that's absolutely true. It's because the engineer at the staff meeting told me that the way this town has always interpreted driveways through wetlands was to allow them, if the Army Corps of Engineer and the Department of Natural Resources. Now, contrary to what some of you said, I'm the one who said last month they couldn't do it, and there was no way around the law, and there's still no way around the law. They moved the building in order to meet the requirements. And during the Plan Commission meeting, they'll be making their proposal and showing what they've done in order to be compliant with the law. So I want that to be clear. It's in conversation about this and the decision not to change the laws that affect structures, that we found out that your past practice for all your citizens has always been that if you had to get to your house and go through the wetlands, you were allowed to build a driveway through the wetlands and put the culvert in the wetlands and put the structure of the roadway in the wetland. Because we, I was very concerned when I heard that a person had been allowed to build, I don't want to pick on the person, but the engineers here and the planners here, you were at the meeting, you're the ones who told me, "We have a problem based on what the, what you all said, several of you said last month, we have a problem, and we're not dealing with the structure problem anymore of the, of the buildings. We're dealing with the structures that the footings and the culverts and things that have to go in the wetland in order for people to build their driveways or build, or build roads." So I'm just telling you, they didn't change, we're not, the staff is not proposing changing the law as it relates to the per se structure that was proposed last month. They moved that building. As to the accessory structure one, that's been on the books for months and months and months. So the question of charges for that, I don't, there weren't any new charges for that. That was written, as far as I know, Mr. Verbarcheck?
It was written last year. We just didn't get around to adopting it.
The, the one dealing with the in-law, in-law units is a different petitioner, and they will be paying a fee. It would just seem like it was reasonable because of all the problems that have been had. And your staff's not recommending you do what the county does, or says follow what the county does. I think people are jumping on that as if the county doesn't have the law that you have that's much more restrictive, and we're keeping it much more restrictive. The, the 30-foot offset area, as I understand it, is not in the state, the fed, or the county. That's a local restriction, and that restriction is being left in place. I just want to make that clear. The exception is the driveway and the roads, because we were told that that's always been the practice in this town. When I go to work for a town and I find out they're doing something or allowing something that the code doesn't allow, I, as the lawyer, have to say, "Well, then I think you better fix your code to make it consistent with what your past practice was." And that happens all the time, that there are things that come up. So, the in-law unit was for a different reason, and the conservancy. So I just wanted to make it clear. It's my understanding the proposal to the Plan Commission moved the building to meet compliance with the existing law, and it's remained the existing law.
I did hear somebody ask how far was the building moved. The building was moved completely out of the wetlands. The wetlands will not be filled for the, for the purpose of the construction of the building, and it is completely out of the 30-foot buffer zone. So none of this has, has anything to do with the construction of the building whatsoever. The building is completely out of the wetlands. If you want to speak, come out to the mic.
Certainly is double speak. And, I mean, we moved the building, right, because somebody spoke at the last meeting, a couple people. Otherwise, I think that building would probably have footings in the ground at this point.
You'd be wrong about that.
Well, please, I'm speaking, sir. Yeah, you're interrupting, again.
That was the first time.
Well, I've been interrupted now a few times, so join the club. The fact is, you're ignoring the fact that you're going through the driveway, acting as though this is the only way he can get to this building. Those codes were written, and the county confirmed this, that if you have no other way, no other possible way to build your building, and you have to go through wetlands because that's the only access point you have, then and only then do you go through the wetlands and find a way to do it, perhaps with the Army Corps, and you're given some permission. For you, Mr. Macy, to tell us that we've been doing it wrong, I've been on the Plan Commission since 1995, that is disingenuous for you to say so. This is here because Mr. Kelnick wants to put a driveway through the wetlands. You can say all you want that he's not going to do it in the building anymore. That's only because we spoke up, because that was the plan that was before you. That was the plan that was before you. And so now, because of public pressure, he's moved it, and you're concentrating on talking about how the building is out of the wetlands, but you're not talking about how you're affecting the driveway and how you're still going to be going through the wetlands to get there. It's wrong. You shouldn't do it. He has 37 acres. He can build this building somewhere else. He has access to his lot other ways. This is to accommodate him.
I'll answer that, and I'll speak to that. First of all, to clarify, the building is not going in the wetlands or the buffer. Secondly, the town of Waukesha has zero authority whatsoever when it comes to wetlands. We cannot authorize somebody to fill a wetland or to alter a wetland at all. That is done by the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Kelnick has the permits from the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers to fill certain portions of his wetlands. The same wetlands that were tilled a mere four years ago. That was a farm, and those wetlands were tilled. They're a very low-quality wetland, and that's why the DNR is allowing them to be filled. He is still not touching the buffer zone. He is filling what the DNR is allowing him to fill, and the town's buffer zone is still not being touched. So he is not violating any of our laws, and this is not for him, because he's not violating any of our laws and rules that we have on the books.
I mean, you're saying that you have no authority over wetlands. It's ludicrous. We have-
The DNR, we're, well, we're going to move on. Does anybody else have any rebuttals?
So you're telling us that it's okay, the building's been moved, which makes me very happy. But he's still going to plow through it for a driveway? Is this, or he's going to put a driveway in through this, all this wetland, and the DNR approved this? Well, then I'm going to make sure the DNR is there when you put your driveway in.
Well, that's, that's fine if you do that.
Because, yeah, I can do it.
But yes, but the DNR, yes, has approved it, as has the Army Corps of Engineer. We don't approve that at a town level. We have nothing to do with it.
But if I get it on my yard, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is a jurisdiction of the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. And they have a very specific procedure in place, and it takes a great deal of time. And they've authorized him to fill a very small portion of that. And I, I don't know the square footage for the driveway area. What have they allowed you to fill? Is it a couple thousand feet?
Roughly, yeah.
A couple thousand square feet?
I can look it up.
But nonetheless, they authorized that. But he's still staying out of our buffer zone. That's what we have jurisdiction over, and he's staying out of it.
Okay. So if I want to go out to my property right now, and I'm a foot on there, I can go ahead and I can plow up and just, right?
I'm sorry, say, repeat your question. Repeat your question.
We can't give you any advice on your property.
No, if it's on my property and the wetlands, right, I can go ahead and just dredge up and let- I can go ahead and just dredge up and let, let the water run and everything.
Let's be clear on what the ordinance says, the ordinance says.
See, why, you know, he can do all this.
No, ma'am, he's, he's, he has a permit from the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers to do what he's doing. We didn't give it to him. The DNR did. So if you get a, if you get a permit from the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers.
To put in a road or a driveway.
You can, you can do.
Yeah, I can put a road all the way down to three acres of land.
Okay. You get a permit.
Yeah, I could.
Okay.
But why? But I'm just saying though.
Maybe to get into your house.
He got, he got this permit, which is fine. He got this permit, it's okay. Well, I'll just make sure the DNR is there.
Sandy Hahn. I think a little bit of the confusion is over when it's stated that we don't give permits to fill the wetland. And I agree with that completely. But what we have done and what was, what came up two weeks ago or a month ago, February 12th, was that we had more strict rules. Not that we were giving a permit, but that we had restrictions against the filling of the wetland. And the town does have that authority, I believe. So that's where someone.
That's incorrect. That's absolutely incorrect. We do not have a restriction on filling the wetland.
Is it on the conservancy, then?
No, that's an R, sip. Yeah, but that's, that's.
Pardon?
They can't fill within 30 feet of the wetland.
That's correct. Now, but the wetland itself is governed by the DNR and the Army Corps.
This is immaterial to the issue at hand, as far as I can tell, Mr. Hahn. But, I mean, as, in your defense, you came in, you met with the planner, you got all your questions answered. So we wanna give you every time to make your comments that you wanna make. We just wanted to make it clear that it only allows driveways and streets and the modifications to driveways and streets. This has nothing to do with the building. You understand that.
I understand, completely.
And, and you're correct. No one would ever be able to do anything within 30 feet of a wetland to put in their driveway or put in their, and that would make certain lots unbuildable, it would make certain lots illegal at the moment. I don't understand, when I was here and you were here last month and, and the other speakers were here last month, we heard clearly from the staff that the past practice has been not to enforce this section if they've got their permits. And we are continuing to enforce it. I disagreed with them and they now know we have to enforce it, except for driveways. So we, you did bring it up and others brought it up. And we aren't interpreting it the way you've asked us to interpret it, correct?
And the only, sure. And the only reason I came back to the microphone was to say that the statement, I'm hearing a statement that's going into the room that I think is saying the town has absolutely nothing to do with giving permits to fill the wetland. And I, I agree with that. All I'm saying is, is that causes a little bit of confusion because the town does have some authority to prevent certain fillings. That was all I was trying to bring out by coming back up.
And I'll, I'll disagree with that. The town of Waukesha has no authority or jurisdiction within a wetland. That is done by the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. And if you'd like to speak, come out onto the microphone, ma'am.
I mean, with all due respect, I don't wanna come up here 10 times, but you can't make a statement that we have no jurisdiction and Mr. Macy sits there and doesn't say anything. We have total control at this point of time as to what happens to wetlands. It's conservancy zoning. This is even designated conservancy. I mean, if you have a piece of property that has wetlands on it and it hasn't been delineated, it still falls under wetland zoning. No dredging, no moving, not only in the wetland, but 30 feet on either side of the wetland. That is our current code. And for someone, if Jamie or Chris is saying that we routinely went through wetlands with driveways while I was chairman, that is incorrect. That is incorrect. So I'd be happy to have a discussion about that later. We preserved wetlands. We honored the commitments. It is not up to you guys to really just to say to the community who's trying to understand what's happening here, something that's completely untrue. Our current zoning would prevent this driveway, prevent this driveway, prevent the dredging of any wetland. You're changing that. So if you wanna harp on the building, that's fine. He made that change. I applaud him after public comment. But now you're allowing him to get to his building through the wetland, which he does not have to. He has no hardship. The language is used when someone has no other option. That is not the case here.
And I respectfully disagree with that statement. You have no basis for it whatsoever that the only time it's used is a hardship. The state of Wisconsin uses it all the time. And instead of spending $10 million to buy up every property, they go through the wetland. And you know that and I know that. So your statement is an overbroad statement that the only time you can use this is a hardship. That's not a true statement.
I say that, sir. I said, here in the town of Waukesha, I'm not going to discuss the state and that is not ever broad. It was said.
You made a broad statement and now you're backing off on that statement.
Mr. Macy, don't argue with.
I'm correcting your statement. I'm not arguing. If anybody says anything to you that you don't like, you have to correct it the way you want it to be said. So no one can refute anything you ever say, can they?
Mr. Macy, I have my words in my mouth. I appreciate that.
Engineer Genelli, who has jurisdiction over wetlands being filled, please?
DNR and Army Corps of Engineers.
Thank you. Can we put that to bed once and for all?
No, we can't.
Okay. Perhaps a staff member that's a professional engineer doesn't, doesn't understand the laws. Yes, sir?
Marla Nemeth, I'm gonna change the subject a little bit. And I haven't been at the previous meetings, but 41,000-square-foot building, do we have any code requirements for a building of this size or can I put a skyscraper on my property?
No, we have a great many code requirements and they've been fulfilled and met.
And this building falls in those categories?
There's, there's code requirements, there's building codes. Those will be met when the building is constructed. There's zoning code requirements. Those have been, all been met.
I'm just talking about the square footage of this building. Is there any limited on square footage of a building in the town?
No.
Wait, wait. We don't have floor area, road ratio, area ratio on open space codes? I'm sure we do.
Yes.
Mr. Revarcher, do you have those?
I'm looking at my, right now, in the public and institute, public park, recreation and public district, we have building location, setback, offset, and we have height regulations.